Okay, welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions in on educational, financial and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The board reserves a right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We hope that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required under the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10-46 at sequential adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton Packet and the Trenton Times on January 6, 2022. It was distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The board reserves the right to enter into executive session and all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 20230 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that this meeting is being recorded. This meeting is not being live streamed. Public members who wish to make comment at the appropriate time, as noted in the agenda or added by the presiding officer, shall raise their hand virtually at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Once called upon, the member of the public will be requested to unmute themselves by clicking the mute button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools as more specifically designated in NJSA 18A 3080.1. In the event this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central administrative and district-wide staff only. Both votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Mr. Bolden, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
President.
Betsy Bagwell.
Here.
Beth Baron.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Jean Durbin.
President.
Mara Franceschi.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
President.
Susan Cantor.
Here.
Robert Christopher.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Bolden. It's the first item on the agenda tonight for board approval is a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and the Princeton Regional Education Educational Support Staff Association or PRASA. This contract will be through, it's for three years and will run through the 20,000, 20,024 school year. The board is very pleased to have come to an agreement with the union and we especially thank their co-presidents Ashante Thompson and Eric Karch and Michelle, oh, yep. Thanks, Michelle. I didn't, didn't, is Michelle here or did she? Oh, Michelle's here, okay. Did you want to say something, Michelle?
Did you, oh, no, and I absolutely do because this was really hard. And, and, and I'm glad we came to a successful conclusion, but this was, this was really hard. And, and the one thing I can say is I'm so thankful that Eric and Ashante did not give up. They, they are amazing advocates for, not only for the kids that they look after every day, but they're amazing advocates for their colleagues and the people they represent in their union and also for us. And so I don't want this moment to go by without saying, thank you for what you do. We deeply appreciate what you do. We couldn't make it happen without you and we're glad this is finally wrapped up because I'm glad we're here, but it wasn't fun. But thank you for, for working with us and for, you know, coming back to the table and making sure that we got over those rough spots. So that's my comment.
So Eric and Ashante, thank you for joining us tonight. I don't know if you had any thing you wanted to say.
I would just say on behalf of PRASA, we'd like to thank the board, Daphna as president and Michelle for taking this across the finish line. PRASA appreciates it. We feel that it's very fair both to the board, the community and to the district and to also our members and we thank you.
Well, thank you. So did we want to vote on this now, Mr. Bolden?
Hold on, I want to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ashante.
I just want to say that I have a great team member in Eric and Michelle is right in saying it wasn't easy, but it was worth it. And Daphna and Michelle really represented the board well. As Eric and I did for our association, we thank Matt too for his diligence and all the calls and discrepancies, but I feel like Princeton is moving in the right direction to keep their members here and to respect us and our jobs that we do and to make sure we are valued just as much as anyone else in the district. So thank you both. Thank you all for all that you do and we appreciate all your support.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bolden, did we want to vote on this now? Okay, can I get a motion? Beth, second. Brian? Any discussion? Notice, I just wanted to say again, thank you. Your union is comprised of a lot of job functions, but the job function, you work very closely with our kids, especially the instructional aides, the custodians, the secretaries. And, you know, like Michelle said, you're the backbone of our school district. So thank you very much. Mr. Bolden, would you please call the vote?
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Rob Christopher?
Yeah.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, well, thank you again, Eric and Ashante. You're welcome to stay for the meeting. We know you have early mornings, so please stay as long as you can. So, Mr. Bolden, I'll now turn it over to you and the 20,022 to 23 tentative budget presentation.
Can I just say something really quickly and just thank Daphna and Michelle for all of their work to represent us at the table? And we, we're really happy to come to this agreement and we thank the union as well.
Thank you.
All right, so, thank you. I just need to find the right screen. So we're going to go over the 2223 budget tentative adoption, which will be on the agenda this evening. So we'll go over some of the early stuff that we won over last time really briefly. Then we'll get to the budget calendar, the school tax overview, tax impact, debt service analysis, and then some details about the tentatively adopted budget. And then we'll have, open it up for questions. I like to read this. We are going through strategic planning. It's just rolling out for the next five-year period. So we're looking forward to that, but I think this is a nice statement of values. As a district, we want every child regardless of race, religion, country of origin, economic status, sexual identity, gender, gender identity or learning differences to fully reach their potential. We want to be a school district where systemic bias or racism quite simply cannot be found. We know that this is immense in scope and know we have a lot of work ahead of us, but we are committed to this work. We talked last time about zero-based budgeting. This encompasses trying to build each budget up from zero to where we get to in the end. It is a good process. It takes time. We are making strides towards reaching that goal, towards a zero-based budgeting district. There are some things I like to talk about. What makes Princeton Public Schools so unique? Obviously, we have a world-class university in our community that provides a great deal of resources. We have small schools with generally comparative to our peers, small class sizes. We have a very large number of student programs and opportunities for our children. We have a large number of support services including full-time family liaison for elementary, middle and high school levels. We have very experienced teaching staff here in the district, programs that are well, well above the state minimum. We do have a higher percentage of our population navigating property than, than mostly the high-performing affluent districts in this state. And we also uniquely in that class have a 24-student charter school in town, also unique to high-performing school districts. And we are making a commitment to equity. So the budget calendar highlighted in yellow, March 15th, it is tonight. There were some changes from the last meeting we had on February 8th. The governor pushed out two weeks so he could have his budget address in person. In fact, as it was rumored, well, not in fact, it was rumored that he was looking to hold the school district's budgets flat, but there were increases rolled out, which were just made available to us about 2:00 in the afternoon on Thursday. That's last Thursday on March 12th. Tonight, we're going to propose a tentative budget for the board to adopt. We hope to submit to the county by the end of this week. Technically, we have another week because of the delayed budget address, but we are looking to submit for the county to approve this Friday. And on April 26th, we would have our public budget hearing and final budget adoption. We looked at this last time, basically comparing our calendar 21 to calendar 20 tax bill. We don't know 22 what it looks like yet, but the comparison of the pieces that we pay towards the county, the municipal open space and the schools did stay flat year-over-year comparatively to each other. So we like to look at how this 2223 school tax levy, what it's made up of. We have our general fund or more specifically, or more commonly referred to the operating budget. We are subject to 2% cap. There are potentially waivers for enrollment. However, as you've heard me mention many times, it is based on a rolling six-year weighted, so where the three current years are weighted against the previous three years. So over a six-year period, we haven't had an enrollment waiver in a few years. Healthcare waivers have also been hard to come by as the state has kept their health insurance rates low over the last four years. So and they're on a calendar year while we're on a fiscal year. So this year, so the other side of the, the school tax levy is a debt service levy, which funds our capital projects, long-term capital projects. We just had a successful referendum. Seventy-six percent of the people who voted approved that referendum. It is to replace roofs. One of the projects, the first one, is on the agenda tonight for approval. Hopefully, we'll be replacing the Littlebrook Community Park and two small pieces at the high school, the old gym and the classroom 152 roof this summer. As of, so we also, it's been a busy week, busy week, definitely. So last Thursday, we also received bids that I just referred to. We also had the bond sale through the help of our professionals, our bond counsel at McManam and Scotland and Baumann and our financial advisors at Phoenix Advisors. It's been a rocky road as far as the bond market is concerned, but even with the volatility that we had, we were able to secure debt. I'll talk about that a little bit more in the future. But that debt service part of the proposed 2223 levy makes up about 4% of the overall at just over $3.7 million. Here, we'll talk about that, where we stand as of right now with our debt. So on March, sorry, February 1st, 2022, we did mature, the last payment matured off of the 2009 refunding bonds. We have a very, one more payment left, principal of 1.225 million from 2013 school bonds. We have most of the 2018 bonds still outstanding. And then we have the brand-new issue that I was referring to. The issue date will be technically March 30th. The bond sale, as I mentioned, was on Thursday. We did, we were able to secure 2.63% on 20-year, 20-year bonds. We maintained a AAA Moody's rating, which is the highest credit rating. So this shows our net debt service, including the newest bond issue over the next four fiscal years. The second bar is the fiscal 2223 budget we're looking at tonight. As you can see, it does drop off the net debt service. And then it will flatten out from fiscal 26 going out. That's assuming no new debt as of right now. So we look back at the, what makes up the calendar tax levy. So taxes are assessed through the municipality. School taxes, I should say, are assessed through municipality for towns in New Jersey, towns and cities. It's made up of two halves since we are on different fiscal years. The town is on a December 31st fiscal year. We're on a June 30 fiscal year. So this shows the calendar tax levy from at the bottom here, 2020 compared to calendar 2021 to 2022. So it's, it's, the increases have been fairly low over the last two years. This is the tentative adopted, tentative adopted, so it's not final, but these would be projected numbers. So speaking about the calendar tax levy, I don't have an update on the assessed valuation using the last year's. Typically, we have increases from year to year. Those, the rate of increases has slowed down. So I am interested, I have reached out to the tax assessor, who is usually great about getting back to me and I emailed him yesterday on an update, but I have not as of yet received his tentative assessed valuation for this year. But basically, we're looking at about a 0.022% calendar year school tax levy increase and with no increase or decrease in ratables, it would be the same effective school tax increase. So if, if the ratables go up over a year, it would decrease the effective tax rate. And conversely, if it, if the ratables were to go down, it would increase that. It means basically the taxes are collected over a larger, if it increases, or smaller, if it decreases base. We've been very fortunate in this community here. So this is a seven-year look back of what I'm talking about, the effective tax increase versus the actual school tax levy increase. As you can see, 2.59% over the last seven years, but with increasing ratables, it feels more like a 1.77% increase for the average taxpayer. So we look at this chart that compares the general or operating fund tax levy growth. Percentage-wise, the percents are here at the bottom for each year compared to enrollment growth. We definitely had a dip, which is rebounding in our enrollment related to COVID. One of the things that we've, we, we did last year strategically was to decrease the operating or the general fund tax increase. We knew we had maturing debt, so strategically, we, we, we knew we would probably use it this year, but we smoothed out the overall tax increase for the average, for the taxpayers. As you can look at here, so this screen is our total or combined tax levy growth percentages, which combines the operating and the capital, which I was discussing earlier. So if you can see here, we'll have just under a 0% proposed total tax levy growth this year, which is a good thing. So one of the things we'll need to do for this budget is to utilize that bank cap. We did generate, like I just mentioned, almost 800,000 last year. And now we can use that this year so the taxpayers didn't feel, you know, the increase as, the increase, we smoothed out the tax rate increase is what I'm trying to say. And this does, we do forego just a tiny little bit when we do this. From 2021, we generated 253,000 just over that. And so the compounding effect, we lose a small amount, but not, not a material amount. And we're forecasting in this budget to use the just over $1 million. You can bank cap for three future budgets. This 253,000 would have been available next year and this 796 that we had accumulated would have been available up until 2425. Sorry, this is a little small. Try to zoom in. This looks at our fund balance over the last four actual years, estimated fiscal year 22. And then where we would look at here, you can see the most important part that the overall fund balances have been growing. However, we have, we did spend capital reserve in the last two years. It doesn't show it as much for fiscal 21. However, we utilized some capital reserve up to $1.5 million to augment the 2018 referendum. We've talked about that quite a bit. Actually, it was very fortuitous that we did all that HVAC work in five of our six schools ahead, mostly ahead and then some during COVID. Excuse me, to increase ventilation into the classroom, which we hope has helped. But we did have to utilize some capital reserve as there were rising inflationary pressures. And once again, also fortuitously, not quite as great as they've become in recent, the recent last year to 18 months, we've seen a lot of inflationary pressures in the economy as a whole. But we're able to put back a little bit in fiscal, I'm sorry, calendar, I'm sorry, fiscal 21. Our fiscal year ends June 30th. We did add back a little. So it looks like at the end of this current fiscal year, fiscal year we're in, in 2022, we will have around 800,000 just under in capital reserve. As we went through our ratings analysis, we actually went through a full ratings analysis last year. Brian McDonald from our operations committee co-chair was able to sit in with our financial advisor as we met with Moody's, the two analysts. And then this year, every time you issued debt, they had to update that analysis. So we're able to maintain our AAA rating, but they really focus on this, what I'm calling the non-capital reserve fund balance. Once you put funds in New Jersey into capital reserve, you can only use them for capital projects. So they really focus on the free fund balance, as I like to call it. This would include maintenance reserve as well. We have about 700,000 in maintenance reserve right now. Our 2022, 2022, 23 tentative adopted revenues clearly shows that the vast portion of what we, how we fund our education in the community is, is local. Eighty-five percent is straight from our local tax levy. And if you add Cranberry, which is local, it'd be 90%. We also have miscellaneous at 1%. So really, so we look at 86% plus Cranberry would be about 91%. We get about 7% state aid. The state does force us to budget fund balance each year, about 2% here. We hope to not have to use that. Obviously, if we were to rely on fund balance, which is basically money in the bank each year, we would slowly delete, deplete our resources. So this is a breakout of how we spent our operating funds for the last audited year, which is fiscal 2021. You can see right away that salaries and benefits are what drive a school district's budget. Seventy-six percent. If you add in charter, what is that, 83%? If you add in special ed, you're up to 87%. Just to turn on the lights and turn on the heat in the buildings and cooling in the summer is about 1%. As you can see, there's not much of the pie left when you talk about the basic spending that we have to do to run the district. So I also like to really focus on the big, what I call the big picture movements each year. So here, we're, we are comparing the budget 22 versus budget 23. We have our estimated actual here in the middle, but as you can see, year-over-year and budget years, we did, were able to add a little bit from the estimated tuitions that we receive from, mostly from our residents in Cranberry. So on a send-receive agreement, the sending district pays the receiving district, which is us, our actual audited state tuition rate, and we're on a continuously reconciling basis. Cranberry would also pay for some special ed costs. We reconcile those each year. As you can see, there are fluctuations in that tuition amount. Generally speaking, the tuition rates are generally increasing due to inflationary pressures, mostly increases from year to year for wage rates and increasing cost of benefits. But that went up year-over-year about 300,000. It had dropped quite a bit. If you remember last year, it put a little pressure on the budget. We are forecasting more extraordinary aid. One of the things I was looking at or was anxious to see was that the state budgeted at least the same amount overall towards extraordinary aid in the state. We do know sometimes last year, they actually increased it late in the year. So hopefully they'll add a little bit as they tighten up that budget. The state is required to, but often does not pass their budget by June 30th. But that's the date when they hopefully adopt their budget. So this is a part, these are two positive things that help. We can see that it's almost, a lot of it's offset by increasing salaries and benefits. The charter school assessment year-over-year was, was okay compared to the previous increase. The 21 to 22 was a larger increase. Budget 22 to budget 23 is just over 2%, $175,000 shown as a negative because we're comparing increased added or increased revenues to increased expenses. We can see that our insurance costs are going up. I talk about this quite a bit in operations, but insurance rates are tied in all over the world because insurance is, the idea of insurance is pooled risk. So there are many costs that even though, you know, we haven't had forest fires here, thankfully in New Jersey, those increased forest fires out west and in other parts of the world do affect insurance rates globally. So we have increases there. We're also concerned with transportation increases. We received word early last week that our, we're about 50/50 split in our transportation in this school district. We do, that means we do about half our runs in-house with our own buses and drivers and we are about That means we do about half our runs in-house um with our own buses and drivers and we are about uh fifty percent contracted. So are, we did renew our athletic uh transportation contractor uh two meetings ago. I think it was two meetings ago, but we did get word on Monday that our um Rick bus is not renewing the contracts. They really, I was uh anxious to see, and of course Donna Braden, our transportation director, was also anxious. Um, it just doesn't make economic sense when they renew their contracts with us, which uh happened. Uh, for most of the last five, six years, they renewed all their routes with us. Um, with the inflationary pressure, their their business model is uh really suffering. They have um. A lot more part-time drivers who are getting uh quote-unquote poached from other school districts. Um, we've done, you know, since they're our partner, even though they're a contracted vendor, we have tried not to steal their drivers. Um, so when they come to look for jobs, um, you know, it it wouldn't make sense. But basically, uh, we have to put um. Those contracted routes out to bid, which are, we are getting gathering uh together right now. Um, so we are looking for some increased costs there. Um, I want to really give out a lot of praise to our transportation director, Donna Braden. She's done a nice job in combining some routes, which should really help to offset that uh this increase. And as you can see, as we get down to the bottom here. Um, all the increases and uh and of expenses and uh. The increase in revenues were left with a little bit possibly extra here year over year. So and that's with uh the three point one-two percent tax levy increase, which does utilize our banked cap. So um year over year, uh, the inflationary pressures uh are definitely. You know, gonna be challenging, but we're gonna do our best. So we're looking at what uh twenty-two, twenty-three adopted general fund uh budget revenues. We were talking about um the tax will be increased. You can see here uh would be three point one-two percent. Um. We're utilizing our banked cap and um actually the state uh has offset. So chapter forty-four, um. Which is the law that implemented uh new health insurance uh that was mutually uh uh conceded to uh. Through the New Jersey Education Association or the Teachers Union and state government. Did create a new health insurance plan, the New Jersey Employers Health Benefit Plan, which is now the mandated. Benefit plan for any new employee. So if an employee leaves uh a district and comes here, or if they leave here and go somewhere else. Uh, that was as of July first, two thousand twenty-one, they take this new plan. Um, we also did create another plan that uh interestingly, the state um makes laws. Um, and they require us to follow them, but they don't always follow them. It's called the Garden State Plan. We did create this plan. It's even a lower cost plan in it called Garden State Plan because it limits services out of the state. So they are trying to control health uh care costs. We only had three people take that plan up, but these plans um. Really uh didn't save us much money, but the through the calculations uh did save us a little bit. So the state is clawing back some of the possible tax increases uh that we could have. We are making an argument to the state that although on and per person. Amount, um, it did save us slightly year over year. Um, that overall, we've had more people choosing to take insurance and we have a slightly higher amount of employees. So our health insurance costs are not going down. Um, I'll keep uh the board, especially the operations committee posted on what I found out uh from the state about this. And and. Tuitions, we talked about all the uh basic here. Our state aid did go up year over year. Uh, three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars uh greater than last year, so that's helpful. Um. Then the state uh forces us to budget fund balance. Um, and we reduce our uh forecasted extraordinary aid. So we always have to put forth a balanced budget revenues and expenditures. Um, we can look here at our. Uh, tentative adopted expenses, um salaries are are on the rise. Um, you know, even earlier this year, we had to increase our, we were talking about uh transportation. Our bus drivers uh went from twenty dollars to twenty-five dollars an hour starting. Um, so in that that we we uh gave people raises uh up to that minimum amount of twenty-five dollars. Just to be able to keep people from leaving, we were losing bus drivers um left and right. Um. The transportation aids uh also got a raise just well with the MOA that we just talked uh. We just talked about, actually, the board just approved, I'm sorry. Um, they were able to get a uh a raise through there. There's a lot of pressure on wages. We're trying to hold benefits uh as steady as we can. Uh, we are facing pressures there. Um, insurance and other professional education services um have increased. Um, we're trying to um, as you can see, we have been spending a lot. Um, I'm trying to fix uh. Fix up our schools and will continue to do that, but we really need to uh start to slow down. That that um growth that you can see, um, we've made a concerted effort to uh. Keep up our schools. Um, energy costs is a little bit, are a little bit of a wild card. Um, usage, uh, you know, w- we talked about the HVAC installations at five of our schools. We installed, um, I think a hundred and seventy-eight Airdales uh over the last three summers. Um, so it would be, yeah, the last three, previous three summers. Um, they seem to be uh not increasing costs tremendously. Um, we're monitoring that closely. The uh window units that we use in a lot of our schools were were clearly less efficient. Um, so we're happy about that. Um, special ed. We're, we, we can do a good, you know, we can only do so much in a short term. Um, special ed services uh are mandated by law. Um, we're holding tight on uh curriculum and instruction costs. Uh, we're basically freezing most budgets that we have control over year over year. Um, we talked a little bit about the transportation pressures um. Um, that we're facing. So um, that's kind of the the uh budget as we're hoping that the board uh will adopt tonight. Um, looking to open it up to questions uh from the board. So let me stop sharing. Um, right now, we can talk about, I can bring up if anyone wants me to bring back that back up. Uh, Beth?
Uh, thank you, Matt. That was really a very helpful presentation and I appreciate it. You know, you obviously worked on it since we saw it last and it's got even more clear. And I I, some of the categories are a bit more clear than they were before. So thank you. And obviously, it's a huge job to figure out how to make it all balance. I just wanted to ask about pre-K. Um, I noted that there was um additional expense this year, about seventy thousand for something. And I was wondering, first of all, are we expanding again this year and did we receive um additional state funds for that?
So the, that was the, that was good. Uh, catch there, not catch, but um. It, so basically, pre-K, pre-K is not mandated, right, at the state level, but the state has invested a ton of money towards it. However, they do this kind of strange thing and they've increased the amount now that we have to pay. So uh their viewpoint, so we don't get funded for special ed children. It's a charge for uh children who are classified, who will be in those. Um, so it's called the PEA, pre- preschool education aid program that we're a part of. So it's a seventy thousand dollar um increase from the previous year over um the amount. So they charge a general fund budget. Um, I find it to be a little strange because we also don't get funded for those special education students. But it's just an amount that we have to transfer from the operating fund to the grant fund. Um, and they've increased that amount in the last year. So it is a little bit of a hidden charge, but um essentially. It's a great thing to.
Did we expand? We have how many classrooms now? We have five, five classrooms, six?
Had six.
Six?
We have four, four contracted and two in district.
And and we get fun, if we get state funds for all of that, pretty much, it's kind of a flow through, right?
It is uh virtually completely funded, except for this little kind of hidden charge. But. Gee?
Hey, thanks, Matt, for all the great work and the great presentation. I have a two questions. Did you say that the tax increase for the taxpayers this year is zero point two-two percent? Did I hear that?
Now, on that, when I was talking about the calendar, so that would be the forecasted calendar twenty-two. Yeah. Forecasted to twenty-three, so I'm sorry, the forecasted twenty-two, twenty-three school budget, which we have control over. Is forecasted to be uh negative point one-one percent, so a decrease of point one-one percent.
Okay, fantastic. And then I'm sure you and my colleagues on the operations committee have thought of this before. But when we talk about transportation costs, I always think about electric buses. I always think about partnership with the municipality in terms of using um their free buses or buses that, you know, run. Um, we've got the university here as well. So I just wondered to do, are we looking at partnerships with other? You know, um, vehicles in town to to move or help move our kids, because I know we have an obligation to do it and we want to do it well.
Yeah, we uh, you know, this year um I've started a partnership with Sustantia Princeton and uh unfortunately. Uh, there was a grant put out there, uh, but it really targeted um communities with a higher percentage of those um. Higher percentage of the population navigating poverty poverty than ours. So um, you know, we weren't able to take advantage of that, but they're still uh. They're still very expensive. So um, you know, we do hope. Uh, like anything, as we've seen with electric vehicles, I mean, we see more and more Nissan Leafs and Teslas on the road each day. Especially with the uh lower-end model, the Tesla rolled out, the Nissan Leaf more, you know, so the economy is the scale will tip hopefully very quickly. So um, we could take advantage of that, but right now they're still about three hundred thousand dollars each uh electric school bus. But they do offer unique opportunities. You can sell back to the grid at high peak um, peak energy uh demand times. You can store the energy if you draw off at a low time and uh a a low portion of the day. Um, and then during the peak, uh like at night. So uh, one of the things that California has been more progressive with this, but they have variable energy charges. So, you know, when you hear about, don't run in the summer in those peak uh cooling months, don't run your dishwasher in the middle of the day. It's because the energy demands are so high, right? We used to have brownouts. We sometimes still do now. You know, back in the seventies, remember the blackout uh New York City? Um, and there was a childbirth uh spike because of that, but anyway, I won't go into that. So we are looking at that. It's unfortunately hasn't quite tipped uh to the point we're able to take advantage of that yet.
Got it. And no, no chance of partnering with vehicles that are already on the road, like with the, with municipal uh transportation system?
Uh, not, not for the school bus uh routes.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Rob?
Hey, Matt, the only um sort of stuck out is a, a little bit of a sore thumb, the uh, the technology cost. Um, when uh we're up, I don't know, twelve or thirteen percent, I think, in the last slide you showed. Uh, just sort of what's the, the background on that? I would think, uh, if I recall correctly, two years ago or so, we did all the uh max and whatnot. Is that related to that? Is that um something else that's impacting the, the budget?
Yeah, uh, the, there, there were a few things that uh, you know, weren't hu- hundred percent forecasted when we rolled out one-to-one initiative very quickly uh in the. Um, covid pandemic, uh, we did increase our, our um internet infrastructure to a ten gig network. Um, so we are consistently investing in our technology infrastructure. Um. The, you also with the uh tight two thousand eighteen referendum, you know, for the new addition. That's hopefully going to be online in the next eight weeks. Uh, we have to uh put wifi there, um, internet infrastructure. Um. I'm trying, there's one other driver there, but we are consistently working, you know, with technology to try to. We've uh financed our technology now to sort of flatten out those uh year-over-year expenses. Um, but there, you know, we can't always foresee everything that's going to, you know, break. Um. But that technology, uh, that is, you're right, is twelve point six-three percent. So, you know, there's one big thing I'm missing. It'll come to me um that we did uh foresee.
Um, no problem. Thanks, Matt.
You're welcome. I'm sorry, Debbie.
Yep, no worries. Um, excellent presentation as always. Do we know how many additional staff members are in our budget or are needed? Um, you know, I know all the administration and supervisors say this is what they need, and I was just curious if. The budget, you know, what was kind of in there for new staff?
So we are uh, once again, you know, we have increased our headcount um over the last two years. And uh, this budget contemplates uh at this point. Um, you know, utilizing some uh, we didn't reduce any. Uh, we had some really cool, small class sizes this year and last year due to the pandemic. It didn't seem to make any, not only on, on top of that. It was hard to uh keep our teaching staff in, right? So we couldn't make any efficiencies there, but we are looking to be uh cost-effective um with our uh adding of positions. Um, you know, I think that's what led to uh problems a number of years back is continuously uh just. Increasing positions. Uh, we need to be more strategic with those increases. Um, and we're going to try to, you know, uh, offset um. You know, some positions that we may not need to uh increase our new positions.
All right, so we haven't heard, I guess, from everybody that we need more staff.
Well, we, we, we heard a lot.
Okay, okay, okay.
There were probably requests of eighteen to twenty-plus positions that were requested now. Some of those, um, you know, we really made an effort this year. Dr. Kelly and I spent a lot of time with our. Um, administrators, we listened and heard. Um, so there likely be a, a few positions added, but we want to. We are looking right now at where we can um, you know, streamline, of course, by. Uh, still maintaining really good class sizes. That's most important, but where we can effectively um, you know, reduce to increase in other areas.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Daphna?
Thanks, Matt. That was a great presentation. So I just want to um, just confirm what I saw. So you're saying the tax, there's going to be a tax decrease?
Uh, overall, if you combine, yeah, the operating and the um.
And the debt?
Capital, uh, the debt service fund. Um, it was a little, it was a little, oh, thank you. It was a little strategic, you know, we tried to, like I said last year. Um. Increase the operating less because we knew we had debt that was maturing, so.
No, I mean, I think this is great, especially, you know, with gas being five dollars a gallon. Um, you know, I think this is really meaningful for our community. So thanks for your hard work on this. Um, just to Debbie's point about new staff, so um. I guess at some point that will come, that will be included in this as far as what, where we're looking to add staff?
Yeah, that's always, you know, uh, we look at that each year. Um, and we really try to be uh, you know, efficient and strategic. Where we add and where we can potentially um produce, uh, hopefully, uh, mostly through attrition. Um, there are certain job functions that we have where we have natural attrition each year. Then, of course, we have retirements um each year.
Okay, thank you. And again, great, great job. This is great news. Thank you.
And I'll say thank you. Thank you, Matt. Like everyone else has said, this was a great presentation. I'm a broken record every year and I just hope that we've asked our staff to think big and think bold about what students need post-pandemic. And you mentioned um specifically that C and I, that budget is pretty, pretty much as the same as last year. I just hope that as we've thought about meeting students' needs and both special education programs in the summer and general education. Um, and throughout the year, that we have been as bold as we think we can afford to make sure that we're meeting the needs of kids as we come out of this. But that's just a comment, but I really appreciate the hard work and the budget. Thanks.
You're welcome. And we do think of that. I was just trying to look up Rob's question. And there was, there was another expense for technology. Um, I can't remember, but there was, that led to that, that increase. Um, that wasn't originally planned, so we're trying to kind of hold technology flat, although, you know. It was an adventurous, uh, it was adventurous to um roll out, you know, the one-to-one uh as quickly as we did. So, you know, we're really working hard on that. Yes. Now, the firewall was definitely planned. We have to upgrade the firewall. That was definitely part of the plan, so it'll come to me. Is there any other questions? Um. I think we're rolling into the uh. Public question. Public question. Let me get back to the agenda.
Brian has a question, Matt.
Oh, Brian, go ahead, please.
Uh, just a reminder that this is uh ten the tentative adoption of the budget and that um. Would there are still be opportunities to do some fine tuning for Dr. Kelly to work closely with Matt and their teams. Um, to look at the budget and that it will be in April that will be asked to approve a final budget. So um, all all board members should know that this is sort of the. Um, our our first um of two approvals and the second one's the one that really counts.
Thank you. So if there's no more board questions, I can roll it out and see if there's um some questions out in the public. Are there any other board uh questions? Okay. So public members, just raise your hand if you want to ask any questions. I don't see anybody raising their hand. All right, appears there are no questions from the public. So the action, there are uh four separate action items on the agenda.
Okay, so the first one, uh, G one adoption of the tentative budget twenty two, twenty three. Can I get a motion? Brian, second, Debbie?
Sorry. Uh, Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Laura Franceschi?
Yes.
Ryan McDonald?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Bob Christopher?
Yeah.
Motion passes. Um, so as part of the um annual budget, um, there is a travel expenditure we required uh by administrative code. To adopt this resolution um relating to maximum overall travel expenditures for the year.
Okay, uh, can I get a motion, please? Beth, second, Susan?
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Ryan McDonald?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Bob Christopher?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Okay, uh, so the next one is um formal bid award roof replacement at multiple schools uh that Matt discussed in his presentation. Can I get a motion, please? Susan, second, Rob?
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Ryan McDonald?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
And Rob Christopher?
Yeah.
Motion passes. So there's um, well, go ahead, Daphne.
Oh, so the next one is uh the travel registration. Do you want to explain what that is? That's just regular travel?
Mm hmm. That's uh just a uh late addition for uh.
Yep, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
That was a question. Uh, that was a question.
Is there a question?
Yes, Beth does. Oh, no.
No, she's making a, she wants to move it along.
Beth Baron, uh, motion, sorry, second.
Betsy?
I'm a little slow on the uptake sometimes. Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Ryan McDonald?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Rob Christopher?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Okay, and I think uh, Michelle, did you have a question?
I I actually have a comment I want to make.
Okay.
So it doesn't have to do with the budget, though.
Okay, well, um, so I just wanted to say, Matt, thank you again for a great job. Um, and uh, your clear way of explaining it to us. Um, Michelle?
Okay, thanks. Um, I've got a bad internet connection, so I'm going to um ask for, I'm going to apologize for the lack of my camera. Um, at our last board meeting, um, there was an item, item M eight on the consent agenda. And it was um involved travel of students. Um, there's two trips that were approved. One is to San Francisco. Um, and the other was to Florida for our music students. And at the beginning of Matt's presentation tonight, um, two of the appoint, the points that he um highlighted. About Princeton was, one was our stated commitment to equity. And the second was an acknowledgement that this is a town that has a higher level of students living in poverty. Than most similarly situated um communities. These trips um cost uh a lot of money. So, for example, the band trip costs two thousand dollars per student. And um the other trip, I'm not really sure what the amount is. Parents are um asked to pay for these trips. Um, we are, you know, we constantly say, and if you can't afford it, then let somebody know. And you can, you know, and we'll help you out and we'll find funding for you. Um, this past week, uh, my son is uh on the track team. And we were asked to pay eighty dollars for for a uniform. Um, and so last um February twenty second, on that consent agenda, I voted yes. To approve the entire consent agenda. I overlooked that item about the band trips. I'm not allowed to rescind my vote because I would have needed to rescind my vote. Before the adjournment of the previous meeting. But I feel so strongly that as a public school district, we should not be asking parents. To pay two thousand dollars or eighty dollars or a hundred dollars or twenty five dollars. To pay to ensure that their child can fully participate in activities. That are part of the academic experience. And I include sports in that bec- because we consistently say. That sports are a part of um their extension of the classroom. Um, I can't rescind my vote, but what I can do is say publicly that I, if I could, I would rescind my vote approving those trips. I think that we are. What they used to say when I was a kid, talking out of both sides of our mouth. We are not consistent. We can't say we're committed to equity. We acknowledge that we have a higher level of low income kids um living in our district. And then turn around and approve trips that require parents to come out of their pockets to this level. It's it's not fair. It's inequitable and it's discriminatory. And and I I really, I feel very passionately about this. That it's so tough for. A kid to come home or not even come home and say anything to their parents because they know they can't afford it. And they don't want to be in the position of having to constantly go to school administrators and say, I can't afford this or I can't afford that. We've got to, and I don't know if we do it in SAC, I don't know, I don't know where we do it. But this practice has become uh a something that we've just accepted. And wow, aren't we wonderful that we're Princeton? Well, no, we're not wonderful. That's not fair. And so for the record, even though I can't formally rescind my vote, I want to publicly state my opposition. To this practice and say to this board that we need to do something about this. We need to address it. Because, quite frankly, it is wrong. So that's my opinion. I I thought it was important that I say it. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to express my opinion.
Okay, of course. Okay, did anyone else have any comments?
Well, if I could chime in, I mean, I, we have sports boosters, you know, they've existed for decades. I'm not saying that's the solution, but I I'm saying that is one way we try to address this, the, you know, booster clubs. Um, and s- some of us are, you know, they're set up as five oh one C three. So. I mean, I agree, sports are an extension of the classroom and and everything should be treated equally. Um, I I'm not sure that, you know, I'm with you in terms of wishing to rescind the prior vote. Because I I don't know that you make people whole by making other people half. Um, I think we can do better moving forward. Um, and may, you know, I'd I'd like to be part of, you know, any uh. Thinking on the subject to how we how we can do better. So thanks, Michelle.
Okay, anybody else?
Betsy? Um, I'll just say briefly, I believe Debbie and I have talked about bringing this broader um discussion of field trips of this sort to the Equity Committee. So we'll talk with Dr. Kelly about placing that on an agenda later this year.
Okay, that's great. That's a good um next step. I appreciate that. Um, and Michelle, maybe you could sit in on some of those meetings?
I'm I'm happy to sit in on on this conversation, and I think we need to really examine ourselves. Because if we're not going to be equitable, let's stop saying that equity is a priority.
Okay. Yep. Okay, well, um, I guess I just wanted to say, um, in the next couple of days, the district is going to be s- um, sending out information on the strategic um. Planning process. Um, there's going to be a survey. There is going to be an ad tomorrow on town topics. Um, and we encourage um parents. Um, students will be getting their own surveys in schools and community members to um, you know, uh, take a few minutes and respond to the survey. Um, as the strategic plan is going to guide how the district uh sets its priorities uh for the next few years. Um, so thank you very much, everyone, for joining. Matt, thank you again for a wonderful presentation. Have a good night. Oh, can I get a motion to adjourn? Sorry. Sorry, uh, Beth second. Sorry?
Does Rebecca have her hand raised or is is it my?
No, I was wa- I was waving good night.
Oh, okay, you you were frozen for me. Sorry about that.
Chris and Ned, thank you for joining us. Okay, so.
So we should vote on the all adjourn, most adjourn, so.
Unanimously, raise your hands. Looks like it's unanimous, Michelle. Yep.
Okay. Now, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.